Yeah, yeah. Easy, easy. Hey, girl. Okay, Bill, my clock is dinging, telling me it is 6 o'clock.
Right.
Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening, it is October 6th, 2021. I am Mayor Julia Johnson and I am calling the City Council Work Session to order. Will you all please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, thank you. I'm going to do a quick roll call, just even though I see you all here, just for the audio record. Let's make it legal. So I will begin with, I will begin with Ward 1, Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Excellent. Jolene, Councilwoman Jolene Kestie.
Joellen, present.
Oh, sorry. Hello. You sure? Councilmember Chuck Owen.
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Loy.
Here.
Councilmember Carl DeYoung.
Present.
And Councilmember Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Okay, good. So some of you commented actually on the agenda tonight. And before we do an approval of the agenda, there's just a couple of comments regarding that. First off, we actually found out, actually just early last week, that it was identified in our code, or at least we have our, in our code, we have our workshops codified and identified as regular meetings. So we can, so our work session can actually be known as a council meeting. And so that's what we're doing tonight because there are some things that really need to move forward. So this is actually a great thing for us. As you well know, sometimes it takes three weeks. Something has to be held off for three weeks until it comes on either the second or the fourth, actually on the second council meeting of the month. So we're very glad that our city attorney identified this and made it known to us. The council sheet that you see here in front of you, this is not what it is going to look like because we do want to keep it a council session. As some of you may have seen, I've actually been out with an injury. So I haven't had a chance to really sit down and discuss how this is going to look with both Doug and Nikki because we want to keep it legal, but not as formal as our regular council meetings because it is a work session. And I do want to keep that flow of conversation, that flow of ideas happening, keep it as vibrant as we can. Somebody asked me if the council sessions, council work sessions are going to be Zoom always? And no, they will not, as I stated in my email to you. It's because of the increase in the COVID cases, quite an uptick in COVID cases, a little alarming, actually. So for the safety of everybody, I thought it would just be better if we held this session via Zoom because you've all been so faithful about attending and participating. And I thank you for that. That shows the dedication that you have, both to the city and to your constituents within your ward. So tonight, what I'm asking you to do as far as approval of the agenda is, it would be the consent agenda, the council members check in, and an executive session. And the executive session would be under RCW 4230-110-1I. And it's to discuss a legal counsel enforcement action with potential litigation, followed by potential action. So at that time, we'll discuss that when we go into executive session. So I'm adding that. Otherwise, we will not be doing the introduction of special guests. That was a misprint. That's, again, that kind of goes back to those of us in admin who didn't have time to sit down and really look at the agenda and put something together that would be appropriate for a work session. So I know that Serena was also asked about this. And this isn't Serena's fault. She only, she does an excellent job of doing exactly what we actually ask or put out. So this isn't Serena's fault at all. Yeah, so those are the items that I'm looking for. There will be no public comment as we never did that in work session. Not unless there's pushback from you on that. But otherwise, I'd like to keep it as close to our work session as possible with the option and the opportunity to bring those things forward that really need to be addressed sooner than later. So is there any discussion, questions, or comments regarding any of that? Okay, so I am looking for an approval of the agenda and that would include the consent agenda, the council members check in, and executive session along with the adjournment. So do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Joellen. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Allen. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 And Carl, again, just for the audio record, if you could please also verbalize it.
I did, I'm sorry it didn't come through. Aye.
All right, thank you. Any opposed? Same sign. All right, motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have items 1 through 3, finance approval of the accounts payable voucher minutes from the regular city council meeting from September 22nd, 2021, and Resolution 107521, which is the adoption of public defense standards. Okay, any discussion on that? If not, please, I'm looking for an approval.
Madam Mayor, Councilman McGoffin, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Is there a second?
Councilman Owen, a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. So let's move into our council check in. I just want to share a couple of things before we do that. First off, I've actually been, in spite of the fact that I've been home most of the time, I've actually been working towards the salary commission. And I have, I've actually put together seven names. I'm only going to be looking for five as per the RCW regarding council commissions. But anyway, I have notified some of them. Email has gone out to all of them. And I have heard back from one. And I'm hoping to hear back from the others soon so we can get that going. So that's just kind of an update on the council commission or the salary commission for the council. Also, I wanted to talk about the COVID readings because I did ask for this meeting to be moved to complete Zoom instead of hybrid because of it. There were, at Skagit, there was a total, in Skagit, there has been a total of 9,782 cases. It's an increase of 429 new cases since last Wednesday. Hospitalizations are at 565 total. That's an increase by 20 since Wednesday. And 99 deaths total, but an increase of 2 since Wednesday. So this happens to be the highest hospitalization rate that we have had since the pandemic has actually hit. So, you know, a little unnerving. A total number of 171,896 doses have been administered at Skagit County as a vaccination. We are now at 72.5% partially vaccinated among our population of 12 years and older. And the Skagit County Fairgrounds testing and vaccination site is now operating from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. The site will no longer operate on Wednesdays. And they say, please come to the South Gate at 501 Taylor Street in Mount Vernon. Vaccination services continue to be offered to all people 12 years and older. And at this point, that's all that I have to share. And I am going to open it up to council to see if there is anything that they would like to bring forward or if, how about if I maybe start just by going down the list? So I'll begin with Brendan McGoffin, Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just had one thing tonight. I wanted to thank David Lee and Wally Hoyt for their responses. I've received a couple complaints about contractors around the city digging up people's lawns and front yards and then not properly filling them in afterwards. I got a really quick response from David and just want to say I appreciate everything that they're doing to help people and to encourage other people that's happening to your property to please let us know, specifically the Public Works Department.
Okay. All right, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the Public Works Department is really doing a good job regarding that. And thank you for letting us know what's going on. And as I think you did share, we've actually received a number of complaints and we've actually been trying to stay on top of that. We do have, within the contracts, some say so as far as how they need to be handling cleanup. So Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Had to unmute it. I don't have a whole lot tonight at all, to be honest. I've just, I've had a few constituents just discuss a little bit about the roadwork and that sorts of things. And as the season's changing, things bumping over to next summer, as explained. And they seemed to be fine with that. I think the crews, the parks crews did an amazing job this summer. And I look forward to seeing what they will do this next year. And then I think up for further discussion at a given point would be the email I think we all received regarding the Jameson property. So I know that that'll probably come up at a later time. But I think that's definitely worth the discussion based on the email that we received. And that's all. Outside of that, further consideration into the discussion from last council meeting, Councilmember Kestie had mentioned something about another cleanup day or something like that after storms. A lot of people in my ward seemed to really like that idea. And it may be not even something after storms, but something maybe next month when all of the trees and everything around here start to shed their leaves and we start looking into cleanup around town. Maybe that would be something that we could work out to open it up for another day that, you know, provided by the city, that people can bring their yard waste into. I think that that would be well received here.
So I am so glad that you brought that up because we actually did have discussion regarding that at the next manager's meeting that we held. And we're talking about making that a policy. So that is something that we are working on. And because we do need to actually work within a budget too, Leo has been very transparent about what the costs are to that. So we want to be mindful of that because even though we are being thoughtful and conscientious of the needs of the community for cleanup, we also need to, you know, be responsible for the monies that are actually we're bringing in to take care of that. So we have a fiscal responsibility. And that policy will be coming before you once it is put together. But we are discussing that. So thank you, Sarah, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Councilman Glenn Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I told you I wouldn't talk tonight. I just want to thank you and the city for coming through with the commission on the council, Councilmatic, and maybe Mayor WJ. I don't know. Thank you very much for progressing on this, okay?
Yeah, well, thank you, Glenn. Yeah, this is a good thing. I think this is going to be a good thing. And it's a good solution that I think you all decided on or settled on. All right. Councilman Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have anything, but I'd like to share with you that my wife and I celebrated our 64th wedding anniversary yesterday. And I'm going to be leaving town for a few days, so I won't be around for a while.
Okay. Well, congratulations, Chuck. That's awesome. That's really awesome. I hope you guys have a wonderful celebration.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Thank you so much. Boy, just enjoying the gully washer right now. So if you have any storm dreams that are plugged, let's unplug those so we don't have any street flooding. Additionally, a lot and lot of people using our recreational area down at the river, the boat ramp. And there's a lot of boat trailer Tetris. And so I received a couple of comments about what can we do to put lines out there so people know where to put their boat trailers and how to organize themselves. So that's the comment that's been put on. I think with the frequency, intensity, and duration of fishing season and a little application of some communication and some common sense, it should be able to work itself out. But fun when you have boat trailer Tetris. Thank you very much. Stay dry out there.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Kevin Loy.
I'd just like to add on to what Brendan said. My front yard is one of the problems that we've had. And I used to do that kind of work 30 years ago. And we used to make it so when we got done with somebody's yard, you couldn't tell we were there. But these folks haven't been doing a very good job. So just kind of add on to Brendan's comments.
Okay, good, thank you. Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Thank you. I just have one thing tonight. I would like to look into performing an impact fee analysis on multifamily new construction to make sure that our fees are where they need to be and to assure that development is covering its fair share of the impact that it's having on our city.
That's interesting that you bring that up. We had that discussion as well at the manager's meeting. So that is something that's in front of us as well. So thank you, Joellen. Anything else? Before I move on to Doug, our administrator, city administrator Doug, mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got several things just to let you be aware of. The first is we're working on an agreement with Skagit County Public Health. This is for the senior center. And we're putting together our annual contract with them where we compensate them for providing services to our senior group. You'll be seeing that coming forward most likely at the next city council meeting. Other agreements that are in process right now, we have two that are franchise agreements. One is with Comcast and the other is with PSC. And Nikki has been negotiating these with both parties. And she and I have been consulting on that. We do have the Comcast agreement nearly there. That'll probably be on the agenda for next week as well. The PSC franchise has a little bit more work yet. And Nikki is continuing that negotiation on that part. So we should get those wrapped up, I would say, probably in the month of October, hopefully. Other things we have going on, union negotiations with our AFME group. That is just steadily progressing. We want to get that wrapped up here soon. So we'll probably be meeting again with that group in the next week or two. This last week, I had the opportunity to travel to Spokane. I'm actually on the Board of Directors for the Cities Insurance Association of Washington. And it's good. It gives us a little bit of an insight into the inner workings of what makes our insurance premiums what they are. So a couple of things that came out of that meeting that were interesting. We look at legislative items and what the impact is on the city. So we had a couple of those. The primary one, though, is the impact of new regulations on law enforcement. And of course, all insurance companies are going to be concerned there because do some of those new regulations and our ability or any city's ability to follow those and the difficulty of that, does that open us up to legal exposure? So our insurance company, CIAW, is working on that issue right now. We had a good conversation about it. And they'll be releasing more information out to us as we go along. The second area that they had concern is, you've probably all heard, if you're trying to build a house or remodel or anything right now, construction costs are extremely high. This has insurance companies concerned because if there's a loss on a building, they've had those buildings valued for replacement at a certain cost. But with this dramatic increase in construction costs, they're cautioning all cities to make sure that you're updating the valuation on your buildings each year to make sure that they're fully insured. They're really concerned cities are going to have too low of valuations. And if something were to happen, there's not going to be sufficient coverage. So we will be looking at the one we just sent in our list to CIAW. And we did take a good second look at that. But we'll be following both of those issues closely and we'll report back to you as we learn more. The last item I have is, one, it's, we do it every year. It's the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And this is our 2% money that we get each year. And it goes out to a number of grant programs in the community. Some time ago, city council passed our recommendation to notify the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. There's a 45-day notice that we have to give them before we take any action. So it is that time now. So we'll schedule that committee, we'll go through that progress. And they will give a recommendation back to city council. So you'll be seeing that coming up here pretty soon. So as you can tell, there's a lot of agreements and a lot of different things that we're trying to get wrapped up here at the end of 2021 for next year. And I think we're making good progress on that. And that's the end of my report.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. Certainly, certainly are. Okay, we will move on now to the executive session. Again, this is executive session authorized under RCW 4230-110-1I. It's to discuss with legal counsel and enforcement action and potential litigation, followed by potential action. So we will be moving into executive session. We're going to go into,
You're good.
We'll be switching over into a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Breakout room.
Breakout, there we are, thank you. And joining us will also be Chief Tucker and also our city attorney, Nikki Thompson. So should have a switch. Yes, I think 15 minutes would be adequate. What's your thoughts on that?
Perfect.
All right, let's do that then.
All right.
All right.
Can anybody hear Nikki?
No, we cannot.
No, it doesn't look like it.
Thank you.